Okay, we'll call the order of the reorganization meeting. Madam Board Secretary, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the public meeting act? Everybody please stand and join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, I get a roll call, please.
Mr. Harkovich, Councilman Delina.
Yeah, here.
Mr. Davis, Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Mr. McEnone.
President.
Ms. O'Leary, Mr. Velosen, Ms. Matilla.
Here.
Chairman Tai. We have a call.
We have a call. You want to swear something?
All right, we're going to swear on the members who are preappointed, Mr. McEnone. Raise your right hand, please. You, Michael McEnone, do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people, and that you will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of a class four member of the Sarbo Planning Board for a four-year term expiring twelve thirty-one two thousand twenty-two, according to the best of your abilities to help you God.
I do.
Congratulations. Please sign your name here.
I will.
And we'll take then Deborah Lee. Raise your right hand. Ms. Lee, you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that you will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of a class two member of the Sarbo Planning Board for a one-year term expiring twelve thirty-one two thousand nineteen, according to the best of your abilities to help you God.
I do.
Congratulations. I ask you to press that down and have Ms. Lee sign that. Ms. Matilla, raise your right hand. Ms. Matilla, you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that you will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of a alternate two member of the planning board, a period of two years expiring twelve thirty-one two thousand twenty.
It's a year.
Term in accordance with the municipal land use law, according to the best of your abilities to help you God. Please thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Kelly was previously sworn by me without an oath of office, so, and he didn't sign the oath of office, so I'm going to re-swear him under the oath of office. Sir, can you raise your right hand? Mr. Kelly, you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that you will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of a class four member of the Sarbo Planning Board for a four-year unexpired term expiring twelve thirty-one two thousand twenty, which is not correct, your term expiring in accordance with the municipal land use law, according to the best of your abilities to help you God. Thank you, sir. Sign your name there.
Sure.
Mr. Kelly? Is that it? Oh, sorry. Yes, Councilman Kevin Delina, congratulations.
Thank you.
Raise your right hand. I don't have a formal written oath of office. I'm just going to swear you in, and then you get the oath of office, you can sign it the next day. And Ms. Delina, you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that you will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of...
Class one? Okay. This is what happens when you give it to me. What about the sheet at J. A.?
Class three. Member of the Sarbo Planning Board for a four-year unexpired term, according to the best of your abilities to help you God. Congratulations.
Are we done?
Yes, now you can...
Okay, the first order of business, we need to appoint a chairman of the planning board. Do I have any nominations?
First, the record should reflect that Mr. McEnone is the chairman pro temp for the purpose of conducting the reorganization meeting.
Got that?
I'll make a motion, we appoint Tom Tai.
Okay, I got a nomination of Tom Tai. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed, need a roll call vote to elect Mr. Tommy Tai as chairman of the planning board.
Mr. Harkovich?
Yes.
Councilman Delina?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Matilla?
Yes.
Okay, next order of business is to pick a vice chairman of the planning board. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Mike McEnone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed, need a roll call vote to elect Mr. Tommy Tai as chairman of the planning board.
Mr. Harkovich?
Yes.
Councilman Delina?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Matilla?
Yes.
Okay, next order of business is to pick a vice chairman of the planning board. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Mike McEnone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations for vice chairman? We'll close nomination process, need a roll call vote.
Mr. Harkovich?
Yes.
Councilman Delina?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Ms. Matilla?
Yes.
Okay, next order of business is to pick a vice chairman of the planning board. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Mike McEnone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations for vice chairman? We'll close nomination process, need a roll call vote.
Mr. Harkovich?
Yes.
Councilman Delina?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone? Oops, sorry. Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Matilla?
Yes.
I don't have to say yes.
Congratulations.
I don't have to say yes.
No, you can.
Okay. Next order of business, we need to appoint a planning board secretary and recording secretary. Do I have any nominations?
Nominate Beth. Last name? McNanny. McNanny. Thank you.
Beth McNanny, do I have a second for Beth?
A second.
Do I have any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote to elect Ms. Beth McNanny for the board secretary and recording secretary.
Mr. Harkovich?
Yes.
Councilman Delina?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Matilla?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Next appointment is for a board planner. Everybody received two proposals in your package. At this time, I'll take a nomination for planner for the planning board.
Make a nomination for John Leon Cavello.
He's talking to the microphone.
Nominate John Leon Cavello.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote to elect Mr. John Leon Cavello as the planning board planner.
Mr. Harkovich?
Yes.
Councilman Delina?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Matilla?
Yes.
Next order of business is electing a planning board engineer. Do I have any nominations for the planning board engineer?
Nominate H. A. Cornell in CME Engineering.
A nomination for CME, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for planning board engineer? Any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote to appoint CME as the planning board engineer.
Mr. Harkovich?
Yes.
Councilman Delina?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Matilla?
Yes.
Next, we need to appoint a planning board attorney for this year. Do I have any nominations for planning board attorney?
Nominate Mark Rogoff.
I got a nomination, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for planning board attorney? Any other nominations, planning board attorney? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote to appoint Mr. Rogoff as board attorney.
Mr. Harkovich?
Yes.
Councilman Delina?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Matilla?
Yes.
Okay, we'll close the reorganization meeting. Need a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting?
Make that motion?
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up the regular meeting of the Sarbo Planning Board. Madam Board Secretary, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with open public meeting act?
Yes, it has.
This is another meeting. Everybody please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Harkovich? Roll call.
Yes, here.
Councilman Delina?
Here.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. McEnone?
President.
Ms. O'Leary?
Here.
Mr. Velosen? Ms. Matilla?
Here.
Chairman Tai. We have a call.
Do I have any resolutions?
No.
Moralize?
No.
No resolution to moralize? Seven minutes. Everybody should have received a copy of the meeting minutes of December fifth, two thousand eighteen. Do I have any adjustments, deletions, additions to the minutes? If not, accept the motion to file the minutes of the...
I'll make that motion.
Do I need a second?
Okay.
Need a roll call vote to file and accept the meeting minutes of December fifth.
Do I have a copy of the minutes?
Do I have what?
Do you have the copy of the minutes, so I know who was there? Sorry, I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, I did. Among my stuff. Got it? Okay, thank you.
Sorry. I just threw them there.
It's been a while.
It has. Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Mr. Harkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Matilla?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Do I have any communication agenda, anything come in?
Nope.
Right along. Site plan subdivision hearings. Mr. Downey.
That's ready, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. My name is George Pressler. I'm the attorney at law of the State of New Jersey. I'm assuming you're being picked up with this?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm an attorney at law of the State of New Jersey with offices in East Brunswick. I represent the applicant who is present and seated in the second row to my right, Robert Downey. Before I begin, I would like to present two documents, if I may, and mark them A1. It's a deed into Mr. Downey initially from the seller, Mrs. Brzezinski, who is present here, and a second deed which Mr. Downey conveyed the property to one of his corporations, just to tie things together.
Okay, A1 and A2?
I have it as marked already as A1 and A2 with today's date.
And can we stipulate to the admission of... Can we stipulate to the admission into evidence of the report?
Yes.
Of J. Cornell, borough engineer, dated December five, two thousand eighteen. Make that a part of the record, certainly reserving your right to be heard with respect to things you agree to, don't agree to, or wish to be heard on. Are there any other reports?
No.
Okay, are there any terms?
Just a planner report.
I don't have it. I have the one for CPV, but I don't... And you know what? That could be my fault. I could have gotten it and I didn't pay attention. I also ask to stipulate to the report from our borough planner, John Leon Cavello, dated December five, two thousand eighteen, into the record, certainly reserving your right to be heard with respect to things you agree to, don't agree to, or wish to be heard on, and it's acceptable as well.
So, accepted, yes.
So, make those two reports a part of the record. Are there any other professional staff reports?
No.
All right, then.
The applicant owns property commonly known as block three thirty-seven and lot two point oh two. It is on the road of Warwick and Yorkshire Place and also part of Washington Road. The application is for a minor subdivision to create three lots. The applicant in so proposing to subdivide these three lots does not, at this time, have any indication or any wishes to construct anything on it at this moment. He just wants to, this is for a subdivision only, and the members of the board, and I know Mr. Rogoff has already looked at this, this application contains no application for any variances, it's no bulk variances or dimensional variances or a use variance. The three lots that are being subdivided completely comply and are in the right zone, R seventy-five zone, and they comply in every respect with regard to that zone. I refer, of course, to Mr. Leon Cavello's planning report that he also agrees there are absolutely no variances at this time, and there's no immediate residential development to be proposed, only subdivision, minor subdivision only. And that is my opening statement.
Any relief whatsoever from the ordinance?
No.
That includes design waivers, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, on that design waiver issue, in my report, the plans do not show sidewalk to be installed along the property frontage. It's noted that's requested, that's for a waiver. I think the applicant's indicating that he will provide the sidewalk, so that probably should be a condition of approval, that he does with the sidewalk along his property frontage, what is developed in the future.
And that's correct. Where is that, Mr. Cornell?
Technical review, item two.
Technical engineering review?
Yes.
Yeah. That's number two, paragraph two. Let me ask you this, sir. Do you agree to comply with all the terms and conditions of the engineer's report?
Yes.
And if there's any conditions that are set forth in the planner's report, you agree to those as well?
I do.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, the board may recall, when this initial subdivision took place, the existing property owner had some concerns about runoff onto the property. It was a condition of your prior approval that a grading plan be provided for review. We've got the same condition in this report. We're saying that prior to any building permits being issued, not only grading plans be provided for review, but also soil erosion settlement control, as well as tree preservation plan. So, that would be a condition before any building permits are issued, those items would have to be addressed to the satisfaction of our office.
No objection.
And that's contained in the prior resolution as well?
The issue of the drainage was in the prior resolution. This one, we've clarified that soil erosion, as well as tree preservation is required as well.
Okay, is there a tree ordinance?
Borough has a tree ordinance, yeah.
So, you're going to comply with the tree ordinance?
Absolutely.
All right. You have any witnesses, sir?
Anybody else want to come up, speaking of half this application on your side?
No. If the board, any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Downey, he is here readily and ready to testify.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
Nope.
Anybody have any questions? Not open up for the public. If not, open up for the public. If anybody has any comments about this application, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Casper Bame. I'm an attorney licensed in the State of New Jersey, formerly have an office on Main Street here in Sarbo, and I appeared before this board at the May meeting when this property was subdivided from my client's property, and I'm here on behalf of my client. Clearly, that first subdivision took this out of a four-lot subdivision to a three-lot. If it were a four-lot, we would be here seeing all of the plans for drainage and stormwater and everything else, because that would have been a major subdivision that would have been required. Your ordinances do permit you to require that on a minor subdivision, and I know it's the practice of the board, and in many cases, a good practice, to waive that on a minor subdivision. But this particular property, I submit to you, probably you should take a look at, and my client would like to take a look at the plans. Because if you approve of this subdivision tonight, what could happen in the future, and I suspect it may happen in the future, that Mr. Downey could sell a particular lot to an individual, and they could come in for plans for their lot, and it would not necessarily be good for the entire property. We have an engineer's sketch that we had from a previous interested party in this property, and the elevation height at the west and north part of this property is approximately a hundred and six elevation, whereas the elevation at my client's most northerly line, adjacent to this property, is some twenty-six feet below that elevation. It's at elevation approximately eighty-two. That's a big drop. If you walk that property or look at it, you can see the development from the other side where Lily Drive comes in, that's a big, big cliff. If the development occurs on this property, it may well imperil the properties to the west. I'm not an engineer, I can't say that, but by permitting this subdivision to be approved without all of that information, you're not going to have a say in it either. I have the utmost faith in Mr. Cornell, but I don't even know whether it's fair to him to put that burden on him without having this board review everything.
So, you're asking that...
I'm asking...
As a condition of approval, that the applicant comply with section twenty-six dash ninety-nine point three?
Actually, I'm asking that this board defer action tonight and have the applicant submit that information for these three lots now, so that the board can see how he plans to take care of drainage. For example, Warwick Road and Yorkshire, in order to drain the water from this property, you can't, well, unless you use an ejector pump, you're not going to be able to get that uphill, because the roadway is above this property. Are there going to be dry wells on the property? The fact that you're going to have three buildings possibly, driveways, you're going to have a lot of impervious coverage, and the courts in this state, the leading case is Armstrong versus Francis, it's a rather old case, yes, as a lower property owner, you have to accept the same water that you're getting before, but you do not have to accept the channeling of that water or an increase in the speed of that water. It's a New Jersey Supreme Court, that's very clear, and that has not been changed over the years. So, we can't tell from anything done here that what's going to happen is that we're going to get more force to the water because of the impervious coverage that's going to exist on these three lots. So, we're simply asking, because we won't be able, if these plans are submitted to Mr. Cornell or the Building Spectator, we're not going to know about it. We're never going to see it. And out of fairness and transparency, we're just asking this board, have it come before you, have a public hearing, and let us take a look at it. We may want to let our engineer take a look at it, to see if there's any comments that we can offer that would be beneficial. In my view, that's for the protection not only of the property owners to the west, but the three new owners, your three new residents that are going to buy these houses, they could have, well have drainage problems without a proper usage of this property and without proper drainage. So, I think you save everybody a lot of agita if you listen and hear all of that before you grant a subdivision. We're not objecting to the subdivision. I understand that it complies with the R seven zone, not a problem, but depending on the drainage, you don't know where these houses are going to be placed. We think they're going to be placed in the window, they're representing that they're going to be placed in the window, but you don't know for sure. So, all I'm saying, and my client is saying, is we would really like to see that, and we thought we were going to see that when we sold the property, Mr. Downey, or else we probably wouldn't have sold it though. So, I appreciate your time and listening to me, and we hope that you will take that in consideration, or at least if you don't, if you're going to act on the subdivision tonight, at least maybe put in the resolution that he has to share those plans with us before he submits them. We have the, you know, we would have a great deal of interest, because my client lives in the house that fronts on Washington Road, which is downgrade of all of this. So, thank you very much.
So, you're concerned that your client has his runoff?
Exactly, yeah.
Due to differential in elevation?
Differential elevation and the fact that...
One thing you said that I agree with you, I also have full faith in J. Cornell and CME's abilities to look at this plan when it's presented, and all those requirements for runoff would have to be met by CME standard before a building permit would be issued. You understand that?
Oh, I have no doubt in Mr. Cornell's ability.
Mr. Downey has a track record in this town of building quality buildings and being very open, and I'm sure that Mr. Downey wants to share that. Plans with you, he can do that.
I'm not aware, I'm not familiar with all of Mr. Downey's construction. I certainly know a lot of it, but I dare say that I don't know any of it that has the terrain issues that this property has. And all we're saying is that, in the interest of transparency, the fact that my client is downstream, if you will, she would really like to be able to review these things with her engineer if necessary. We do, as I say, we do have engineering on this site, so we know what should be the elevations that his engineer would come in at, but if, in fact, he just gets a buyer to submit an application for one of the lots, I mean, I don't know what's going to be shown, what's not going to be shown.
Jay, just for the sake of the board, can you just explain the process, this application tonight, and down the road, Mr. Downey comes out with a plan to build construction there, how your office handles that before a building permit gets issued?
What would happen is the zoning officer, when he receives the application for a building permit, he would provide a copy to our office for review. We would review soil erosion plan, the tree preservation plan, as well as the grading issues. I understand Mr. Baim and his client's concerns about runoff, and there are a number of ways that that could be addressed, but I don't think Mr. Downey at this point knows the type of houses he's going to build, whether he's going to put retaining walls, how he's going to grade those, so it's difficult to say at this point how that issue can be addressed. But once we see a plan that has all that information, we can look at it and have his engineer provide calculations, pre-development runoff, post-development runoff, to confirm that it's not being increased onto your client's property, and we'll look at the grading plan as well to make sure that it's not going to runoff onto that property.
And that's in the code, I mean, that's your ordinance. So the engineering department would, as a matter of course, the engineering department as a matter of course would review, you know, drainage issues in addition to the other issues that Mr. Cornell referred to, and is there some reason why you feel that's not adequate?
Well, let me say this, I understand what Mr. Cornell said, what they do. Having been a former borough attorney in this town for a number of years, I know that. I've seen that from that side, but what he didn't say is that he would share those plans before approval with any object, I didn't hear that from him.
Share them, what's-
Share them so we could review them, see them, comment on them.
How do you suggest, what do you mean comment, you mean privately, publicly?
Well, that's the question. If it's not before this board, it's certainly not publicly.
No, because at this juncture, it's not required.
So all I'm saying to you is-
However, aren't they going to, I assume the applicant's going to agree to comply with, and that would be a condition of approval, the Borough Ordinance Section 26-99.3, which is storm drainage facilities?
Yeah, and that's what I-
And he's nodding his head affirmatively, so.
Yeah, I understand that, but in other words, well, if he complies, fine, we may have some, in his mind, he may comply. Our engineer may came up with something that Mr. Cornell didn't think of, his engineer didn't think of, it's possible. Nobody's perfect in this world. Mr. Cornell does a great job, but-
Well, let's do this, my suggestion would be that the applicant agree to share a copy of the proposed drainage plan, and create a drainage plan, and share it with your client prior to any construction being conducted.
If that's part of the resolution, that would be very helpful.
I mean, I'm just suggesting is, you know, that we do that.
Yeah, or maybe he'll agree.
I don't know if they, I don't know if they agree with that or not. So councillor, do you agree to that, or is that an acceptable resolution to his concern? I should say his client's concern?
Excuse me councillor, while they're deciding that, can you just reference the case that you mentioned?
Armstrong versus Francis.
Francis, thank you.
It's a case out of Monmouth County. And I can give you citations, I have it in briefs when I did some litigation in Burlington County on drainage issues. I don't have it with me.
Or if he shares the drainage with his client, why, does he have to comply with the third engineer to come in if he says, no, I'm not going to do that, but yet it's still approved by CME? I mean, what happens then?
He would, you know, he, I'm not going to tell him what he should do, I'm sure he knows, if he thought there was a problem with the engineering study or the engineering approval, you know, he can-
So there is recourse?
While there is recourse, he can maybe appeal to the governing body, but I don't think it'd be in time. Or he could file something else.
On accident, Superior Court, obviously.
He could file a prerogative action.
Yeah, and I don't want to do that. I mean, basically my line, client wants property that's not flooded out, that's all, that's all we're here for.
Well, she's entitled to that as anybody else. That's a given.
Oh, he's a good builder, and I think he will comply and agree to what-
Well, I have no qualms with any of the commercial structures that he's built in town, they all look beautiful.
I don't see the Armstrong case here.
Councillor-
It's not in Cox.
It must be somewhere else then, what's in it? Where is it?
I'm reluctant for the planning board to put in a resolution that the client has to do something. Is the client willing to share it? That's the question I have.
I asked him that.
Yeah, and I don't know, I didn't hear, I'm-
The answer is no.
Okay. I'm sorry, but even so, sharing does not obligate him to follow what they desire.
No, it does not.
That to me is a problem, it just-
No.
The building permit will be issued based on a borough engineer satisfying, if the review is satisfied.
See, all this could be solved by the fact that I submit Mr. Downey's application is premature, wait till he gets people to-
It's, I beg to differ, it's not premature, it was deemed complete.
I understand, I understand where you're coming from.
We're not going to deem it uncomplete because of what you said, so the bottom line is to say conforming three lot subdivision, the miscellaneous actually obligates the planning board to approve this, subject to reasonable conditions imposed thereon, which I think they've done. And at this point, you know, since we're going to make it a condition of approval with respect to all the terms and condition in the engineer's report, in addition to what's been discussed this evening, that should more than adequately protect your client.
Any other board members have questions for the attorney? Mr. Kelly?
With what you're proposing, and I just want some clarity on this, even if you were to show these plans to your client's engineer, and your client's engineer had a disagreement with the plan and thought it could be done better, it would be no legal reason for him to have to comply with your client's engineer?
I agree with you. But at least we would get knowledge of that, and Mr. Cornell, if he approved it, fine, but if we knew that it was coming down the road, then from a timing standpoint, if we wanted to file an action in Superior Court, we certainly would have the opportunity to do it.
So wouldn't the freedom of information take care of that? You fill out a form and you get that?
Yeah, but if we knew it was being submitted, we could request that, although I guess we could do an open, request for open records as a continuum request, would the town honor that?
Well, you could just be, you know, in contact with the board office, I mean, send a letter to the board office, and if something comes in, you know, the engineering plans come in, and they could include drainage to advise you so that you can obtain a copy of, and look at it and do whatever you want.
Well, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the public want to speak about this application? Any other members of the public? If not, I'll close the public auction, and I'll accept the motion to approve this plan.
A motion on the application?
On that application, yes. Are we putting that stipulation in for the sidewalks, or is it going to be part of the resolution?
Yeah, everything that's on the record, including the sidewalks, are contained in Mr. Cornell's report, they're-
The applicant was agreeable to that.
Yeah, he was agreeable to one, two, three, and four, which is in the technical review.
Need a motion on this application?
I'll make that motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, they have a second.
Second.
They have a second, what sector, I need a local vote.
Mr. Kevich?
Yes.
Councilman Delina?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnam?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Matilla?
Yes, based on a quick preview of the 1956 case, I don't see anything that would be a conflict.
Okay, applicant is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell, thank you.
I wasn't here on the fifth, am I still left? I wasn't sure, because I think it was on-
Next applicant, CPV Keyesby.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Neil O'Brien, I'm an attorney from the law firm of Archer and Greiner, Pattenfield, down in Camden County, New Jersey, here on behalf of CPV Keyesby LLC.
Hold on councillor for a second. Mr. Chairman, for the board's information, I'm going to go through and be stepping down on this application. Our office did work for CPV on their application when it went before the Woodbridge Planning Board. We've not been involved with the Saraville portion of the project that's brought to us this evening, but in discussing the entire application with Mr. Rogoff, he felt it was best that our office stepped down, so we've asked Mr. Lee in Caballo to go through and provide the detailed review on this application, and he's done that. Thanks, I'm stepping down, thank you. Sorry councillor.
No, no problem, no problem, thanks Jay. Again, Neil O'Brien from the law firm of Archer and Greiner for CPV Keyesby LLC, applicant here this evening, and developer of the proposed Keyesby Energy Center, which will be located right across the river from you in Woodbridge Township. This is our application for waiver of site plan approval, or if deemed necessary, site plan approval, for very limited development associated with the installation of an underground wastewater utility line, which will emanate from the MCUA facility here in town, will cross the MCUA property, cross the Raritan Conrail rail line beneath, of course, cross beneath the SARA property, the Borough of Saraville Economic and Redevelopment Authority, and then cross through various, after crossing underneath the Raritan River, cross through various properties in Woodbridge Township, and will wind up at the new or proposed Keyesby Energy Center for the purpose of providing essentially processed wastewater or gray water from the MCUA facility for beneficial use at the proposed Keyesby Energy Center. If this application looks familiar to you, it's because in 2013, March of 2013 in particular, this board approved a similar application for what is now the existing Woodbridge Energy Center, which if you look across the river, or indeed from the park where the turnpike, you can see it, exists in Woodbridge Township, is now operational. While our application in 2013 had two components, this has only one. In 2013, we requested your approval for the development of a similar gray water line, again from the MCUA facility, again going through or underneath the Raritan River, and providing the same service to the Woodbridge Energy Center as we are looking to provide for the Keyesby Energy Center when it is built. The second leg or component of that application related to, of course, you build an electric generating station, you have to somehow introduce the power to the grid. In 2013, the power from the Woodbridge Energy Center, it traveled through electric tie line or generation tie line easements through Woodbridge Township, along or close to the bank of the Raritan River in Edison Township, then across the Raritan River and interconnected with the JCP and L substation right here in the Borough of Saraville. The reason that we are not asking for a similar approval in connection with this application's connection will be made to the PSENG Mettuchin substation, but of course, the power generated will still serve the regional power supply. So the gray water line in 2013, and the one that we're asking for approval for here this evening, will basically exist side by side, as will now the two energy stations in Woodbridge Township. Properties are located within the waterfront redevelopment area zoning district, and because the facilities were associated with the MCUA facility and MCUA infrastructure, which are permitted uses pursuant to the waterfront redevelopment plan, the gray water line was considered a permitted use in 2013, and we are of course requesting that it be considered a permitted use here this evening. Because the utility line, or, sorry, the electric tie line was not located within the waterfront redevelopment area and was not associated with the MCUA facility in any case, it was considered a conditional use, a public utility use in 2013, and we addressed those factors at that time. So as I've said, this application is limited simply to the gray water line associated with the new Keyesby Energy Center, and will essentially have the same characteristics as the similar facilities that you approved in 2013. So if I could, I've just got a couple of people who I'd like to introduce you to this evening, and I just have three exhibits. For your ease of reference, I've provided the spelling of their names and their affiliation, but of course, we'll put it on the record, and the title of our three exhibits that we'll use if necessary here.
Well, before we do that-
Go ahead councillor.
I just want to get these, there's only one report, and get it to make a part of the record with your consent, and that would be the report from John Leon Caballo, dated January 16, 2019. Have you received that report?
We have and reviewed it, yes.
You agree to make that a part of the record?
We do.
Are there any terms and conditions contained in that report that you can't comply with?
No, we'll be discussing the general points in the letter, but no, there are none.
Okay. Are there any other reports?
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry, having said that. You seeking preliminary major and final site plan, correct?
We're seeking waiver of site plan, or in the alternative site plan, if the board deems a waiver not to be appropriate.
Yeah, we don't have a waiver, you guys do waivers of conveniences. I looked at the application for completeness and find it complete, and the waivers are reasonable, they do with size, these, the size of our maximum drawings are 24 by 36 in the ordinance, they're 30 by 40 or bigger, whatever it is, so, and things doing with scale, and so there are about seven or six or seven waivers, and they're nominal.
Site plan.
Yeah, they're- You don't have any objection to that?
No.
Okay. Does the board have any objection to the waiver request?
Anybody on board?
Having seen none, so the waivers would be granted in their discretion. This is not a conditional use, right? I heard that word.
Correct, it's permitted use.
Okay. I think that's everything.
Thanks councillor. If I could have Andrew Arkhart step forward and just give you a little flavor of who the applicant is, and exactly what we're doing both regionally and right here in Saraville, and we'll have our engineer talk you through the details of the actual development. The first of our exhibits is up there, which Mr. Arkhart may or may not reference, it's Exhibit A1, overall permit aerial plan, it shows the pipeline route, and it shows it all the way, as you can see, from the existing Woodbridge Energy Center, which you'll see as the gray portion up sort of plan northwest, and right next to that is the vacant area of that same property, where the Keyesby Energy Center will exist, so the pipeline will follow essentially the same route as the existing pipeline. But Mr. Arkhart, if you could step forward and be sworn-
Who are you asking?
Sorry?
That's your first witness?
Yeah.
We need to swear.
Yeah, if you could step forward to be sworn.
And we need to qualify him.
Yep.
See a fact witness?
He's a fact witness, he is the applicant, he's here on behalf of the applicant.
Sir, you want to raise your right hand, you swear, do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give the board in this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do. So Mr. Arkhart, if you could state, again, your professional affiliation and how you're involved in this project.
Thanks Neil, and thank you board, I'm with CPV Competitive Power Ventures, I'm a manager, and I'm in charge of the development of the CPV Keyesby Energy Center.
And you had a similar role in connection with the development of the Woodbridge Energy Center, right?
I did, that's correct.
Okay, so tell the board a little bit about your organization.
Sure, so Competitive Power Ventures, we're a North American electric power generation company, and we specialize in providing clean energy, utilizing high efficient natural gas, wind, and solar generation facilities.
So you talked about, you talked about clean energy, the wastewater component here is an additional component of that clean energy concept, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, what's your organization's experience here?
Sure, so CPV's senior management team, they have over 20 years of experience in the business, they've been involved in over 10 gigawatts of generation that they've developed and built, that represents $15 billion of investment, and we currently have an asset management team where we manage power plants across the country, and right now, we are managing over 38 gigawatts of electric generation.
Approximately how many employees?
We have approximately 80 employees.
So what's happened since 2013, that the board, as we've said, the board members and certainly members of the public can see the Woodbridge Energy Center in operation?
Sure, so the Woodbridge Energy Center went into construction at the end of 2013, was under construction for about 30 months, and it completed construction when it operated in January 2016, and since then, it's been providing clean, reliable power to the rate pairs of New Jersey.
About how many construction jobs?
600 construction jobs.
So moving on to the new power generating station, Keyesby Energy Center, why has your organization decided, why CPV decided to move forward with that development at this time?
We believe there's strong market benefits and signals here, by doing this, we can relieve congestion in the New Jersey area, and provide more reliable generation to the rate pairs of New Jersey.
And this expansion's always been contemplated, this second facility's always been contemplated at this site-
It has, yes.
-in Woodbridge Township. Will the new facility expand the availability and the number of clean operating, clean generating facilities in the state?
It will, yes.
And is it in line with the New Jersey Energy Master Plan?
Correct.
So we talked about connecting to the PSENG Mettuchin substation, what will be the benefits of that?
That will be going to the PSEG substation and delivering power into a different utility here in New Jersey.
So it'll increase the diversity or the availability of supply regionally, rather than going through the same, the same, the same source as the Woodbridge Energy Center?
Yes, absolutely.
About how many construction jobs and full-time jobs here?
Construction jobs are looking about roughly the same number, so between 500, 600, and full-time jobs will be between 6 and 8.
And what'll be the additional capacity here?
About 600 megawatts.
But we'll be using the same natural gas supply source as the existing Energy Center.
Correct.
So the, obviously, the Borough of Saraville Planning Board is an important approval in the myriad of approvals that we'll need to obtain for shovels to go into the ground and eventually start construction of the Keyesby Energy Center.
Absolutely, it's an important milestone for us.
And what do you anticipate, as much as you can, what would you predict is the timing of that construction start, and in particular also in Saraville?
Sure, so in order to start construction, we need all of our permits for the entire facility, and then go out and raise some financing around that, but once we start construction, it'll be about 30-month construction period, and the gray water line, we'll probably be a 12 to 14 months of that.
You're talking about there's a construction in Woodbridge, correct, the facility in Woodbridge?
And the gray water line also, obviously, here in Saraville.
Okay, well, construction, they're constructing the facility first, correct?
It will all be done in conjunction with each other.
Okay.
So in terms of start of construction timing, you're not really able to give the board a definite prediction?
It does, I know, it's, you know, we have to get all of our approvals in order first, but I think probably the back end of 2019 or 2020.
Any questions for Mr. Arkhart?
Questions from the board?
So if I could ask our engineer Jesse Dougherty to step forward, we'll have him sworn, if you don't mind councillor, and qualify him, he is offering testimony as the applicant civil engineer.
Anyone to raise your right hand, you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give the board in this matter, is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it?
I do.
Need to have your name and address, sir, for the record, and then your qualifications.
Jesse Dougherty, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey with Marathon Engineering, located at 553 Beckett Road, Sweets Bar, New Jersey.
I need your qualifications, where were you educated?
I have a bachelor's and a master's degree of science of engineering from Rowan University. I also sit on the executive board of the Builders League of New Jersey.
Have you been previously qualified by other boards?
Yes, I have.
All right.
Do you need a motion to accept the credentials?
I'd like that motion to be accepted.
On favor?
Thanks, have it go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dougherty, let's give the board just sort of a refresher, or for perhaps the members that weren't here in 2013, referring again to A1, just show them where everything is and what's going on here.
All right, the entirety of the original constructed gray water line starts at- The entirety of the original constructed gray water line starts at a flume discharge, which used to convey the majority of the water out into the Raritan River. This is clean, treated effluent after the treatment system is done through the treatment facility. So it picks up to that, it runs the original pipeline, runs through the existing utilities tunnel, out, and then along a group of MCUA easements that run up into the Woodbridge Energy Center. Our proposed route is about 500 feet shorter, because we're not actually occupying the tunnel right-of-way space. We're proposing to directionally drill underneath the Raritan River in a new location because of limited capacity of the tunnel at this point. We're also looking at a maximum about a 24-inch diameter pipeline. Squeezing that inside the remaining space of the tunnel would preclude it from future activities that the MCUA may need for the tunnel, which would limit essentially sewer capacity for the plant if it need to expand it. Picking back up in Woodbridge, the, we'll follow the same right-aways that were already granted through easements up into the plant location.
So again, what's the purpose of the reclaimed water here at the Woodbridge Energy Center?
Okay. The reclaimed water is to remove the need for potable water source to be used in the cooling towers for the plant, so we can use treated effluent. It's safe for surface discharge, so it's treated at a much higher level to be discharged into the Raritan River. There are treatment facilities on site to remove any additional metals or any materials that get picked up in the pipeline along the way. So it's essentially clean for the giant radiator system to cool off the power plant.
And it avoids using potable or regular...
That's correct.
Domestic water for that same purpose?
Yes.
Is it a contained system? Is the gray water line a contained system? It's the same water going back?
It's a contained system. The majority of the gray water, once it enters the site, is actually boiled off as steam and water vapor, so it doesn't actually get returned back to the plant. It winds up in the air as a water vapor. That, or it's boiled off instantaneously once it hits the cooling mechanisms for the plant. So the contained system, it's really a direct one-way pipeline. Any excess water that's collected essentially has condensation, it drips out through the pan, does return through the sewer system and back into the treatment facility through the existing pipe network that's out there.
Are you purchasing the water, then?
Yeah.
Yes. MCU.
Terms of disturbance, surface disturbance, disturbance under the river, what are we talking about here?
So surface disturbance, you'll see, when it's all said and done, it's a temporary disturbance. It's an open trench construction on-site in the MCUA facility that's along an existing roadway adjacent to the existing gray water pipe that was installed for the Woodbridge Center. The, as it comes up to the river, at the Conrail property, which, if you can't see on this one, I don't know if my exhibit...
So you've just introduced Exhibit A2, which is a more focused aerial photograph or permit plan aerial, showing the gray water line as it comes out of or goes into the MCUA facility?
I don't know if colors resonate that far off the board. I do apologize for that. The dark gray line was the existing gray water line that wasn't installed. Its maximum diameter, I believe, is 16 inches, so it's under capacity to serve the additional, for the Keyesby Energy Center. Our maximum diameter proposing is 24 inches for this to provide enough capacity for the plant. As you see, it runs along the same easement area. It does break out here. Essentially, there is a new facility that was constructed that the aerial does not pick up in this location for secondary treatment or third treatment for the plant itself. We do bypass around that and then cross over our existing pipeline, this stretch from here to over to the Woodbridge side, is about 70 feet underground. It's located mostly in the bedrock area of the thing, so we're actually crossing over the existing tunnel. Once we hit the rail, the Conrail right-of-way, we're able to directionally drill into the bedrock underneath the SARA property and then out into Woodbridge. The pipeline's being proposed, it's steeper than the navigable channel, so if there was ever any dredging proposed for the Raritan River, we are below that depth for any potential dredging in the future.
Any DEP permitting concerns here?
DEP permitting, we're actually, the pink line shown on the plan is the waterfront development line for that. We're actually drilling upland of that, so we're outside of those areas. So this, for Saraville, we don't require any permitting. We're outside of the wetland area as well, which is marked in these dash lines here on the plan, so we are outside of those areas as well.
How about restorative concerns? Restoring the surface of the ground that where you're using traditional drilling or where you have entry pits or exit pits?
Opening of the trenches will be restored as it is today, which is a grass surface along, adjacent to the roadway trench areas. As far as the pit areas will restore to as they stand today, it's a combination of gravel, stone, and some grass areas on both sides of the river.
So will there be any facilities, after all this work's completed, will there be any facilities that might raise the traditional or understandable concerns the board might have about buffering or shielding or...
Visual impacts, the only visual impact you'll see on the Saraville side when this is completed is the above-ground tie-in connection to the discharge flume that directs water currently to the Raritan River. That right now is being buffered by an existing Evergreen landscaping effort on the side of the treatment facility. This is abutting essentially the tanks and everything else that you'll see in the aerial that are 20 feet plus above your head. So buffering a 24-inch pipe coming up is minimal compared to the remainder of the site.
Any questions for Mr. Dougherty?
Questions from the board, if any engineer?
That's all we have for you in direct testimony. Again, we have, we think a fairly straightforward application this evening.
Counsel, you're not seeking any relief from the ordinance, are you?
We're not, we're not.
No waivers, no variances.
Correct.
Any questions? Seeing none, I'll open up for the public for any questions or concerns about this application. Anybody from public want to speak about this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion and entertain a motion on this application.
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we...
You just talking to the mic, I'm sorry. Don't get...
Apologize, sorry. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve this application with no waivers.
We have a motion to approve the application. I have a second.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, I need a roll call vote.
Mr. Harkett?
Yes.
Councilman Delina?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. McEnam?
Yes.
Ms. O'Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Matilla?
Application's approved.
Thank you.
Did you mark those for identification? Are they part of the plans?
These were prepared specifically for the rest of the project.
So we'll keep what's not part of the plans?
Okay, pressing on with the meeting, ladies and gentlemen, administrative things, we have a meeting scheduled in front of us, and also Jay has produced a tentative future agenda. Anything you want to talk about that, Jay? Mr. Chairman, just for your information, your next meeting is scheduled for February 13th. There are two minor subdivision applications that are tentatively listed. Your February 20 meeting, there's nothing scheduled at this point in time, and your attorney has a conflict, so that may be canceled, but we can discuss that at the February 13 meeting. Thank you. Any questions? Just before we close, just want to say, Beth, appreciate all your help. You're very efficient and very professional. I appreciate all the reminders and the backup information. Thank you very much. If not any questions, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
In favor? Aye. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. Appreciate it.
So Beth, I'm going to need copies of all the oaths that we did tonight aside, because we need to probably correct the terms. They're not correct. Oh, shit. Was I supposed to write on that?
I think it's going.
I got a question. What do I do with this? Is it...
What?
You what?
I don't know, I remember. Not?
Okay.
Got a way out there, some bins before you go downstairs?
That's what I was... No, I was never told. No. I will say, if I think it's not important or something that we didn't close, I'll keep it.
So what I'm going to need is send me the copies of the oath, and I'll, we need to correct the dates of the term.
I've got a part of it.
Everybody. It looked, yeah, I'm going to...
Usually if you need something for...
Send them all to me, and I'll figure it out.
They're copies again. They have a record.
I know. I mean, if it's a four-year term and it says 2020?
You were. How long ago?
Fourth or third.
I do.
I don't have it in front of me, but I thought it said, say, four-year term, and...
I guess it's better than, right.
Maybe I read it wrong.
It's times for a year out. Now you get to collect it.
Okay, but there's other ones that say class four. I thought it was a class four in there that said it's a four-year term and expires in 2020. Or 2022 wouldn't be right either. Yeah, exactly.
It's in right in there. Well, I don't know if I say congratulations. Well, yeah, you can call it.
Black sign one? And then the formal written oath for...
Can I ask if anyone's heard from anything about the waterfront project? Few people have asked me.
What's that?
What's that? If there was any news on the waterfront project?
You got to do, you got to watch the meetings on TV for sale.
Oh, I get, I get the go-to some, I keep saying it.
Oh, I thought you said you get to go to it.
No.
No, I watch them on TV.
I know, because I never saw it.
Well, you just got to flip it at Channel 15.
I have to leave it or not, and I, sometimes like late at night, I go, I...
Right.
Two in the morning, or...[1714.82]